The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, welcome everyone to our town council meeting. We'll call the meeting to order and if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilor Jello Christensen. Mayor Krasinski.
Here.
Councilor Luddy.
Here.
Councilor Panessa.
Councilor Russell.
Here.
Councilor Yonaga.
Here.
Councilor Veach.
Here.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you very much. Unfortunately, we've got a couple of council members missing, a couple of different reasons, not the coronavirus. They're fine. It's not spreading in Berlin yet, so let's hope it stays away, but they, just a couple of things came up for both of them, so. But we're here, so we'll go ahead and start with our audience of citizens. Anybody who wants to address the council for any reason? Now would be the time. Don't all rush at once. All right. Hearing none, seeing no hands, we'll go ahead and close that. And we'll go, move on to our consent agenda. So, we have, what do we got? We got 13 consent agenda items. We won't vote on all of them separately, or we'll be home at midnight tonight. But I'll just summarize them. We have some different rounds of go off there. We're going to donate to different civic organizations. Donation will be accepted, if we vote yes, donation to the library. We're going to approve our volunteer, Berlin Volunteer Fire Department, to sell food beverages at our annual auto and truck show at Sage on May 23rd. That's always a great event. Have a couple of those. Connecticut Masters Games in May, hopefully we'll approve that. Boy Scouts to be allowed to sell burgers at their, Mattabasset Pinewood Derby at Pistol Creek. We have another donation, couple donations to our Berlin Park and Rec. Approval for a alcohol beverage permit at Pistol Creek. They will obtain the insurance, obviously. Little League approval to sell their beverages and ice cream and other merchandise at their fields. And accept a donation to the police department, so. Quite a range of consent agenda items, but I know we've all had our package before the meeting and reviewed them, so if we have any questions on them, any concerns on anything? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion for our consent agenda, 1113.
I move to accept the consent agenda items tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so we're on to new business.
All right, new business. Item number one is an ordinance appropriating $800,000 for the purchase of a fire vehicles.
Yes. So, we have our ordinance. So, yeah, so we have, obviously, we've, you know, we've talked about this, obviously, and we're here now to go ahead and authorize the funding for that. We know we need to replace some fire apparatus. Mr. Simons has done a great job in keeping the council informed, and I know in the long run, we're replacing, obviously, some badly aged fire vehicles with new ones, and I think we're even saving a couple of trucks in the, in the whole deal. So, it's a, something we obviously need to do for the town, certainly for the fire department, keep them safe and keep the town safe, so if you want to, we'll take a motion and read the, you want to do it, do we read that first, or we do this first? Okay.
So, it just be the, the town council will now consider.
Just that one? Do we need to read the ordinance?
Nope.
You don't? Okay. Okay, so we have our ordinance action tonight. The town council will now consider and take action with respect to the fire vehicles 2020 appropriation and bond ordinance. A copy of the ordinance is available from the town clerk, is our motion, and a second that the fire vehicles 2020 ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second.
Second? Thank you very much. Any, any further comments or questions? Okay, we hear none, so we'll go ahead and call the, we just all, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, declare the ordinance adopted, so we will move on with the borrowing for our fire truck.
Thank you. Item number two is an ordinance appropriating $500,000 for a truck wash bay.
Okay, so this is another ordinance and a bond ordinance we're going to pass, so hopefully we'll pass. The town council will now consider and take action with respect to the truck wash bay 2020 appropriation and bond ordinance. A copy of the ordinance is available from the town clerk, and we'll take a motion to approve the truck bay wash, that the ordinance be adopted.
So moved.
Second? Thank you. Any further questions or comments from the council? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I declare the ordinance is adopted. Three?
Thank you. Item number three is an ordinance appropriating $2.6 million for bridge improvements 2020.
Thank you. So, this is the third one of our appropriation ordinances tonight, so the town council will now consider and take action with respect to the bridge improvements 2020 appropriation and bond ordinance. A copy of the ordinance is available from the town clerk, is our motion, and a second that the bridge improvements 2020 ordinance be adopted.
Yes, so moved.
Second? Thank you very much. Any other discussion from the council? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I declare the ordinance adopted. So, we got our bridges fixed. That's probably, that's pretty important. Okay.
Thank you. So, item number four, next one, is a discussion presentation from Mr. Simontian, the Mattabasset District.
Okay, good evening. Arthur Simontian from the Mattabasset Sewer District.
How's it going?
Good to have you here again. Yes, long time no, no see here. I'm glad I'm back.
Home week, here we are, right back again.
So, this item here is our annual presentation on our sewer budget from Mattabasset District. Mattabasset District serves the areas of New Britain, Berlin, Cromwell, and Middletown. Within Berlin, it's actually split into the three districts, however, we have an agreement with the Water Control District, who in turn invoices the other two districts for their proportional shares of the sewage disposal and treatment over at the Mattabasset District in Cromwell. So, this year, we have some good news. There is an item that we did pass out, which is called our Budget Notes for Berlin. Fortunately, we're able to lower the budget down this year by about 0.32%. Some of this is actually due to the addition of Middletown. Middletown, who owned their own treatment plant before, has now shut their treatment plant down, their wastewater treatment plant, and is fully connected to the district as of December of 2019. So, the good news for the charter members, constituent members, is that's going to help offset some of that cost on the operating side, so.
That's great. Budget going down, decreased, wow.
Yes, yeah, I know, it doesn't happen often, but.
That's phenomenal.
Yep, so we're actually excited about that, and it was, again, about, Berlin's net assessment also went down by about $3,400, and that's in addition that we had to absorb our normal increases between retirement benefits, health insurance, capital cost increases, electricity, so to have a decrease in the budget is pretty good. Unfortunately, Middletown assessment did go up quite a bit, went up by about $1.4 million, but, but, you know, that was expected, and we'll be presenting to them sometime later this week. The other thing that Berlin should be aware of is that they also still receive a credit back every year on their assessment, and this is for the Middletown addition to the district. There's a $13 million buy-in fee, and so some of that money comes back, actually, all of it comes back to the charter members, which are New Britain, Berlin, and Cromwell only, in a credit every, every year. And this year, Berlin's benefiting by about $267,000, and that'll continue on for another, I think it's about another 14 or 15 years. It does slide down the amount each year, but, but they've received quite a bit of credit already so far, so I could tell you the, I think I have the credit amount, maybe not, no, but, but it is going to continue on for another 14 or 15 years. So, Berlin's assessment went from 1.96 to 1.957, so about $3,400 drop in assessments this year, and we should continue to see that. Berlin's done some pretty good work on their I&amp;I side. I don't know if Ray is here. I did see Ray yesterday, Ray Gerima, and they are continuing to do that, and it has helped. Your flow actually, and I think I put some notes on there, your flow has actually dropped. Your five-year average flow is 50%, and before it was actually over 51 or 52% back in, I'm sorry, no, that's New Britain's. Your flow was 14.9%, and it was high as 15.3 before, so it is dropping down, which is helping out quite a bit. The debt portion of our assessments also, we have the Clean Water Fund Loan, it's a $110 million Clean Water Fund Loan, we're paying that back, so that's going down as well each year, so that'll actually help in the long run as well. And, and New Britain is still the largest community, so they are still paying the highest amount, but Middletown's be paying their fair share starting this year as well, so. So, if there's any questions about the budget, it is due July 1st, we do send it right to Mr. Gerima, and I think the finance department gets a copy as well, but the whole budget is listed in here if there's any questions about it. We are doing some energy projects too. I know you guys recently completed some energy projects, so we're about halfway done with ours, so that'll help save some electricity in the future as well.
Great. Well, thanks. Appreciate that, appreciate that info, always good seeing you guys here.
Yes. I try to keep it brief, I know you have a long agenda tonight, so.
We appreciate that too.
Kate will.
And we're happy to hear the budget decreasing, that's, that's phenomenal news.
Yes, yeah.
No matter what, how, whatever.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. John Dunham is our board chairman here, so he's a Berlin resident.
Yeah.
My name's John.
Oh, come on, John. Share the joy, come on.
Yeah, no, it's, it's good news that it's going down, but you really do need to understand it's a result of the Middletown buy-in fee.
Right, right.
And we spread that out over a number of years, and, you know, we didn't want to have a big spike and have it go down too much, so I think it'll be even for a number of years, but at some point, that will disappear and.
Of course.
Be a bit of a cliff that comes back up, that's for down the road.
That they're always.
Right.
But, so the, the Berlin, just the flow is down from Berlin, you were saying? Just like what?
On a five-year average basis, it's come down.
Why would that, just, just what would?
Probably because you're doing some of that lining work.
Ah, okay.
So, you're getting, you're, you're stopping some of that rainwater and groundwater from leaking into your pipes.
Ah, okay.
And I know you're doing some work on Belcher Brook, and I think also in the Kensington District, or you're trying to get them to do some I&amp;I work on their section, so that's going to help the overall, I mean, our budgets won't necessarily change that much, but your proportion of the budget will go down, obviously, if you lower your flows down, so that's good news for, for Berlin.
Yeah, that's great, that's why we got to do those, keep up with those projects, obviously.
Yeah, and, and the other benefit is it extends the life of your sewer pipe too, as well, so, you know, usually 50 to 70 more years out of it, so.
Oh, nice, good. All right, good information. Appreciate it, guys, thanks, as always.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Item number five, right? Item number five is the approval of the Berlin Police Contract. So, this was, in 2019, the union approached the town expressing their interest to begin conversations, and so I'm pleased to inform that we were able to get it resolved, and we have a contract here. Denise Parsons is here, in case you have to, you have any questions for her. The, all the non-financial items were first resolved with the police chief, and we met with the representatives, HR, finance, myself, and the chief, and we were, we had probably half a dozen meetings, very cordial and very reasonable, and we are pleased with where we are today. So, you have the final items listed here, happy to answer any questions.
That's great that we got this done early.
Early and without the expense of Labor Council.
Oh, even better.
Done it all off the record, without using the attorneys, where last time with this contract, because they changed unions, we had a very large bill, so we're thrilled that we were able to do that.
That's great. Well, that's, you know, some nice cooperation between the.
Very good relationships between the union, the chief, and the town.
That's great. That's, that's great to hear, and I've heard that, and it's great that it, you know, results in a contract ahead of time, and one that everybody appears to be happy with, right? As happy as they can be, I guess, right? We get that. Questions? You guys have questions?
No.
In the contract? Any questions? Yeah, we read through it, again, you know, it's, it's great to see both sides came together and worked it out without those darn attorneys in the room, you know, we just don't like those. Present company, excepted Jeff. And myself too. But, but that's good. All right, so if we have no questions, we're happy to see it, and we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I move to approve the contract between the Town of Berlin and the Fraternal Order of Police, Berlin Police Union Lodge 56, for the period of July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2023.
Okay, second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions?
Abstain.
One abstention, right? And, so, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Item number six is a bid waiver, purchase requirement for a fire department to continue receiving medical and physicals from the Connecticut Urgent Care Centers. And Mr. Simons is here. You want, have any questions?
No, I think we've, yeah, we know they've been, they've been using that, right? Yeah. Yeah, do we, does council have any questions, anybody, on this one? Okay, we'll take a motion.
Okay, move to waive the purchasing requirements and allow the fire department to continue to receive medical examinations from the Connecticut Urgent Care Centers, for an amount not to exceed $24,000, since this is in the best interest of the town.
Second? Thank you very much. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Item number seven is a request to transfer funds from the fuel account to the tire account, since we are, using more tires. And previously, authorized a cap, $25,000, and this is going to extend it not to exceed $38,000.
Using a lot of tires up lately? Ah, burning some rubber out there with the town vehicles, or what?
Heard from Jim this morning. Haven't come up.
Yeah, Jim, come on, tell us about the tires. What's the story of the tires?
They're from China.
Might not have any for a while, they're coming from China.
Well, we've had two things at the tire account. First one is some of the larger loader tires we had to replace this year due to road hazards, i.e. they have holes in them. And the other thing is, is that the legislature put together a package that says that the fire apparatus has to be maintained in accordance with an FPA standard, which requires the tires to be changed on a yearly, not a yearly, but on a date basis, instead of a wear basis, and we're trying to catch up on some of that, because some of our tires were, you know, they're not as used as much, because they sit in the firehouses more than they would if they were in a city. But the age dates were up on them, and we tried to get those changed, and even in next year's budget, we'll be completing that process. So, both of those, along with some increased costs from importing things from China and increased, increased costs of rubber, petroleum products, have hit the account.
Okay.
But we were able to locate some money within another account to cover that, so.
Great. Good. Any other questions for Jim? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion?
Two here.
Two, that's right, there are two.
Okay, move to approve a transfer of $5,100 from the fuel account to the tire account to provide funding for the remainder of the current fiscal year.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two?
Number two, move to raise the previous cap of $25,000 for an amount not to exceed $38,000 for the purchase of tires from Connecticut Tire, Inc., utilizing the state of Connecticut DAS contract number 18PSX0022.
Second? Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight is a request to waive the purchasing requirements to purchase some diesel fuel in advance. The price is right.
Ah, the price is right.
So, we've been with East River Energy for a number of years, whether we went out to bid, CROG, or we just extended contracts, they've always been the lower bidder, they've been great to us in the town of Berlin. With that being said, we'd like to extend the contract with them. Now is the time to really look at the contract, and there's a couple of reasons for that. Number one, one of the reasons is we're coming out of a warm winter, so there's large stockpiles of diesel oil or fuel oil. Number two is that in the last couple of weeks, because of the illness or the virus out there, the stock markets have crashed a little bit. China has shut down, which was the second biggest user of fuel oils and things like that, and the market has come down. Unfortunately, yesterday and today, the market made a turnaround and started coming up a little bit, but it's still, we're still about 25 cents cheaper than we were last year for the contract. So, I can't tell you when we lock in tomorrow and sign the contract to buy the futures, where it's going to be, but I'm still hoping we're going to be somewhere around 25 cents cheaper, and then purchasing $33,000, that's, you know, $8,000, so.
Ah, significant savings, yeah. Yeah, that's great. Okay. Any other questions for Jim? Hearing none, we'll take a motion.
Okay, move to waive the purchasing requirements and allow the fleet department to purchase 33,000 gallons of diesel fuel for the fiscal year 2020, 2021, from East River Energy of Guilford, Connecticut, since this is in the best interest of the town.
Second? Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim. Item number nine is from Public Grounds. It's a request to purchase a utility vehicle. And Steve Woods here, can tell you all the fun he's going to have with that.
Yeah, sounds like a fun vehicle.
I know.
Council might have to take some field trips and just see how it works out.
Seriously, you're more than welcome. Over the last several years, the Conservation Commission in the town has bought a ton of open space, and we've turned it into passive recreation to hike. Currently, the only way to access most of these trails is by foot or blazing a trail to get a large piece of equipment into there. And by talking with Jim Mahoney and the Conservation Commission, we came up with an idea that purchasing a utility vehicle would help us access ports, tires, tree houses, people living on top of a ragged mountain, or if we have a blow-in on a large tree across a path, we can get in there, we can cut it up, we can get out of there with doing minimal damage to the property. We checked out three pieces of equipment, we checked out a Cushman, we checked out a John Deere, and we checked out the Kubota, and the Kubota seems to suit our needs the best, as it is, and it's also the lowest price we got.
Nice. Well, I'm glad to see that we're, obviously, we've had a lot of attention to Bicentennial Park for a lot of different reasons, you know, over the years, and I think we all feel that we probably need some more patrols and maintenance on the trails for a lot of different reasons, so that's, that's great, we're paying attention to it, and, yeah, all right, that's good. You guys, questions from you guys? No? No? All right, so, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
I move to approve the purchase of a Kubota utility vehicle from the low bidder mid-state tractor and equipment, for an amount not to exceed $19,500, including accessories, using funding from the open space in lieu of fee account.
Second? Thank you very much. Any other questions? Thanks, Steve. Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And again, I'm glad we're, you know, I think, I know we've looked to step up patrols in there, because people are taking vehicles in there when they shouldn't be, and it's great, you know, you'll, even if, just you going out to fix something, people see the town presence out there, you know, that hopefully will keep the people from destroying the place in, in some areas. So, it's great.
Thank you. Item number 10 is related to the Kensington Road Bridge. It's for Design Services, and Mike Gahen can probably give you a background as to what they're going to do next.
Another bridge.
Another bridge. Boy, there's, we haven't been replacing or fixing too many lately, have we?
Uh, yeah, we've got about eight. We have eight we're working on and one phase right now.
Well, I guess the time has come, right?
The background on this is that the original application for the lots of funding was just to reline four of the, this bridge consists of five circular culverts and one concrete box culvert, so the original approach was to reline four of these and replace one of the box culverts. The CROG was okay with it, it was about $800,000. DOT doesn't like that, because they're having trouble with these corrugated metal pipe culverts, so they came back and they said, replace the bridge. But as part of that, we have to revise our lots of application with a little more engineering work, so we're getting 100% of the replacement cost covered by the lots of, once we get approved, which is, it could be approaching $2 million.
Oh, wow.
The town will be funding the engineering, the detailed engineering, once we get approved, so I'll be back on this same bridge with a little higher price tag, but I think overall we win. But anyway, so Cardinal was a low bidder on this, we had nine bidders, $12,000, the high was 54, and Cardinal was the original engineering firm that helped us with the lots of application, so they have a lot of background information, which is why they were lower, and I have no, no qualms at all about recommending them.
Great. Okay, thanks. Good. All right, any questions for Mike? Okay, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, move to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract agreement 2020-10 with Cardinal Engineering of Merritton, Connecticut, as the lowest responsive bidder for the bridge engineering services for the Kensington Road Bridge in the amount of $12,000.
Second on that?
Second.
Thanks. Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Mike?
Thank you, Mike. Item number 11, we've been talking about this for a while, need to upgrade HVAC in elementary school.
Yes.
This proposal is for you to refer this to the Public Building Commission.
Oh.
Doug Solux here, if you have any questions.
Yeah, this is the Willard, right? We've been talking about this for a while.
Actually, it's all of them, right?
I mean, all of them, sorry, right, I'm sorry, but, but we put, was Willard was going to be first, right? Is that what we were talking about, or no?
Yes.
Willard was.
We're going to be first, right? Which is, what, put off a little bit now? Are we putting it off till?
Not, but, we're trying to get it off the following summer, summer of 2021.
Okay.
The next budget year.
Yeah.
If everything goes according to mine.
Right.
Too late to get things done this year.
Right, we can't get it done? Okay. Yeah, I know, we gotta fix all these things. They gotta get done. Okay, any questions for Doug? No? I think we've heard a lot about it, so we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I move to refer the elementary schools HVAC upgrades design and construction to the Public Building Commission.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Agenda item number 12 is a contract amendment to get some door and window work done at the community center building. This is a group that has already done some work, and hence, we are going along with them.
All right. Any questions, the council? Stuff that has to be done, so go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I move to authorize a bid waiver and contract amendment for accurate door and window of Preston, Connecticut in the amount of $39,516.44, which includes a 20% contingency for change order eight, including options 1A, 2B, 3C per ASI 05 for the community center entrance doors and associated windows, since this is in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks.
Thank you. Agenda item number 13 is capital regional council of governments. They apply for a regional performance incentive on behalf of some of the towns. They need the council endorsement to do that. Said just here to answer any questions.
Not much more to add. They're looking for money from OPM. Essentially, we are one of 39 towns in the CROG region. They normally do a lot with transportation. This in itself will be a grant. Items of most interest would be probably number two, school municipal back office consolidation, cost benefit analysis, and then TOD marketing and deal structuring. So essentially, if they get a grant, putting this forward, it's our support. And then now that we have this, if there is monies, we can then connect with them and potentially use some of the money. So it's just really saying, yes, we think it's a great idea for you to go for the money. If you get some, we'd like some, basically. It's the best way to put it.
Okay. Okay, all right. Okay. Any questions for Chris?
We're good.
All right, we're good, so we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I move to approve the resolution to endorse the capital region council of governments to apply for the above referenced regional performance incentive program and authorize the town manager to sign all necessary agreements and take all necessary actions to allow for the town's participation in the program.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 14 is granting an easement to CNG for the work that they're going to do at the boulevard.
Essentially, this is going to bring natural gas through, largely through 889, as well as through the boulevard, essentially allowing Newport Realty Group to do their work. Because we currently own the property, we're essentially giving them the easement to go through. So the easement will continue once ownership changes to Newport, but essentially, this is the first step through the process, and it's got to go from this board to planning and zoning for the 824, and hopefully to return to you soon.
Great, great to see we're moving forward, yeah, right? Yeah, that's great. Okay, go ahead and take a motion on this.
Okay, I move to refer the granting of an easement to CNG to provide gas lines and services to the Berlin train station TOD project to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a review pursuant to section 8-24 of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Thank you. Second? Second, thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Chris.
Agenda item number 15 is a matter that we're requesting you to refer to the ordinance committee relates to tax exempt organizations leasing property and having their exemption carried through. Kate's here, if you have any questions on that.
Kate's like, what?
We can give some background if you want.
Yeah, just a little bit.
Can you?
Yeah.
Do you want me to do that? Yeah, so this started with the Moreland Hill High School. That is, that closed. And, you know, since it is no longer, you know, serving the tax exempt purpose, it's been back on the tax roll. And then the Y is interested in partnering with them or leasing the property or buying the property. But their attorney has reached out to us, to Kate, and said that there's an ordinance that they would like to get on the books so that whenever they do that, it'll go retroactive and will be tax exempt.
So what is happening right now is the YMCA is leasing the property, as the town manager says. And state statute allows a town to adopt an ordinance to have a leased property tax exempt if it is charitable, religious, or nonprofit. We have to get that ordinance in place so that the YMCA, as they're leasing the property, can get.
And Moreland was exempt anyways, right? So we're not losing any money by doing this.
That's correct.
The Y is nonprofit?
Yes.
Really?
Yeah. Okay.
So what the, what the answer is?
Send it to the ordinance committee?
The ordinance committee will review it and then make a recommendation after the council. At that point, you need to do the regular name of the public hearing. It would be a new ordinance and the adoption. At that point, also, what the assessors asking or requesting is that the state, then the ordinance for the adoption of it, that is retroactive from October 1st, 2019. So that way, they continue where the Y is.
Okay, so yeah, it's just going to go to the ordinance committee so we can have some discussion there, and obviously, whatever we decide, we'll bring it back to the council for a vote. So we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I move to refer a proposed new ordinance for the ordinance committee to allow for a property to be tax exempted if leasing to a charitable, religious, or nonprofit organization.
Second on that?
Second that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. So we'll get it on the ordinance committee agenda when we have our next meeting.
Thank you. Agenda item number 16, speaking of the ordinance committee. This is coming from the ordinance committee and asking the council to have a public hearing on the amended ordinance.
Right, this is the golf course budget that we have discussed and made a recommendation to the, to the council, so we gotta go ahead and have our public hearing, so we'll go ahead and take a motion on this.
Okay, moved, I moved to set a public hearing on an ordinance amending the Public Golf Course Commission ordinance for Tuesday, March 17th to 2020 at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Second on that?
Second that.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, town manager's report.
I gotta report to you something, man. I got it. All those ready? I'm sorry?
Impressive.
That speed?
Forty minutes.
Yeah.
I'm like, whoa.
Moving along on a roll. Let's not mess it up now, Roche. Let's not mess it up now.
That's the new way of doing business. I could keep it really short and not give you a report.
No, no, we don't want that.
All right, a couple of items, but let's, want to update you on something new first. We had a conference call with the Central Connecticut Health District just to start thinking about COVID-19 and the coronavirus. How to, not to be paternalistic and tell people what to do, I mean, it's a good thing. They thought Central Connecticut Health District will work with the town to talk about just common sense stuff, right? What are the symptoms? How do you recognize that you, if you have this, what it's going to look like? Pretty much going to be like the flu with shortness of breath, right? And the basic other things that you ought to be doing, you know? Just covering yourself when you sneeze and, you know, washing your hands and if you have the virus, a lot of serious other things where you should not be in contact with people, staying at home. But, so there are two components to it. One is the town hall, which I will talk about. The second one is, I think, is the bigger and the more important, more important is working with the schools.
Yeah.
Right? That's where it could, if one person had it, could spread quite rapidly because of, you know, a large number of students and people gathering together. That's how it gets through. If you're quarantined, or if you're separated by yourself in an office, chances are highly unlikely it's going to spread to someone else. But if you're in a classroom, and if you're in tight spaces, contamination can happen. So I have contacted Brian Benigni, the superintendent, and put him in touch with Charlie Brown. And he is, as we speak, coordinating a meeting with the principals, assistant principals, just to get started on it, right? There are a lot of questions about, not just in Berlin, other, come April, a lot of the schools have planned study abroad trips. One week away in Spain, France, Italy, what happens? Already the insurance company is saying, too bad, you're already paid.
Out of luck, out of luck.
Out of luck. So there'll be some decisions that we'll have to make. Not we, the schools and as a group, as we get closer. And every day, there are new developments, you know, so far, Connecticut seems to be fine, but you're sending people to areas that might be affected, and what does it mean? And when they come back, we need to be prepared because there are a lot of parents asking questions, well, why are you allowing these kids to come back? Because they were in Spain, and the coronavirus is there, right?
Right.
So there needs to be a whole education process as to, and a planning process, and so that you're not caught off guard when things happen. So all of this is about thinking and planning and mentally going through the exercise. So I'll switch gears to the town side in terms of, the timing's really appropriate because we had just started talking about business continuity plans and how we should think of business continuity. It's an ongoing process, and we were just ready to do an exercise in terms of taking a group off town hall, not thinking of coronavirus, if the town hall didn't exist, you know, how would you operate? How would you collect revenue? How do you run payroll? You know, how do you issue your permits? But let's put this cap on, we are actually gathering the business continuity team that, that, next week, to sort of put this in our mind and say, what are the things that we have to do? So, for example, we got to start thinking about our sick leave policies, and if they have to, we have to amend them on a temporary basis, we ought to be doing that. And here's why. If we have a staff member or one of their family members affected by the COVID-19 or the coronavirus, they could, we don't want them here. But if you plan in certain functions, I'm talking about the town staff, not everybody can do this. Can work from home. You can, we can run payroll from home if somebody gets sick. There are certain functions that can be done, right? I mean, you can't really, if you're in public works, you can't do that work from home. You have to, you're here. So, so what does that mean if you have to be here? We have to start thinking about cross-training people in certain functions, especially with the central services, you know, this, we're going to expand the conversation to PD and the fire department and all of that, right? So, and then the other, other piece is we will also have to decide about non-essential functions. Town hall is heavy traffic, you know, people come in and go all the time. We ought to be thinking about what are the services that we can provide electronically? People want permits, other things that we are already planning to go online. Don't come here, access us electronically, and maybe there are certain things we can do. So department by department, function by function, we have to plan for this. So if something happens, we have a, we can roll out the plan quite easily. And, you know, simply said, you know, some of the other functions are, if it's not that critical, it can wait, you know? Sadly, you know, one example that was given was, you know, when people want to come and do a record search. I mean, how important is that? Maybe it's important, but can we not accommodate it until we get through this? The, the other component is when the events that you plan. I mean, this could be another one, you know? If you get to a point, do we want to conduct business? This is again, out for discussion, not inviting the public or have it on TV and doing it from a remote location. So we have to start thinking about that. Places where senior programs, concerts, large gatherings, we have to have protocols set up to say, if certain events or certain things happen, what would trigger cancellation of an event where you don't want large amounts of people gathering? We're getting close to the summer, parks and rec, you know, the summer programs, all of that will be a large number of students, so we have to start thinking about those things, you know? The registration starts early, but if something happens, let's think about the policies, refund policies, all of those things have to be thought out beforehand. You do food pantry, you know, people come in and going, how do you handle those things? Do we stop them, or do we, these are the things that we haven't really thought about. We got to have a plan to address those things. So these are, I would say, common sense type of things, but let's not wait until something happens. And then I've told Kate, like in my previous life with other things, we've been through this mentally, planning and doing like a drill. And we're going to start doing that. Gather the town people and break down all the services that we provide and realistically see what is it that we can do from other locations, things that we can discontinue, where we can cross-train. So plan A, B, C, D, just go through the list and just create a map. If something were to happen, we could execute it.
Got to plan for the worst, you know?
I remember I was still working, we, we had a plan for the avian flu pandemic. Is there anything the town has on record in files towards that?
Not necessarily for that, Peter, but we have learned from it. And the, really and truly, Eros forward, and I'm involved because I'm with the Business Continuity Plan, I'm chairman. But the Central Health District did forward a lot of good information for us. And Eros and I will be meeting tomorrow, and we'll talk more about it. The other concern also is, and I guess Corporation Council, Denofield and I were speaking about it earlier, but there was an incident or incidents in Texas this morning that poll workers weren't showing up for the primaries. So we have technically three primaries. And Eros and I have spoken about this April 28th. So we have to make sure that, and I've spoken to the, the Democratic register is out of the office right now, but I've spoken to the Republican registrar, and we're, we're thinking. We're trying hard to make sure we come up with things to make sure that we can handle three elections. It's not like in November where it would be one. It's, it's three different elections, you have to have different people. But I'd like to just point out something that came up today, and I haven't had a chance to really speak to Eros about it, but it came up on the news feed. The one thing that we all use and we don't think about is our phones. And I would encourage you very strongly, and the residents of Berlin and everybody else, to please check with your manufacturer, find out how to clean your phone at least twice a day. Because without realizing it, you go, you wash your hands, you're all good, you pick up your phone, and you don't know what's on that phone, all right?
Bleach wipe, I bleach wipe it.
Yep.
Once a day.
Yep, all right, and.
Always have.
Yep, and it's a great habit to be in there because that goes right to your face. Without thinking about it, it's an easy thing to kind of like just get into the habit of. And there'll be more coming, you know, we'll get some stuff on the website.
That's what I was going to say, can we get some of this out to the town on the website, right?
Yeah, so, yeah.
A lot of it's common sense, like you say, but.
Also for like schools and cafeterias and places, you know, wipe down and sanitation. Extra.
Yeah, extra, right.
A lot of times a day and having.
Door knobs in the town hall, maybe, you know, right?
And even for elections, we'll have to do that, you know, make sure that people come in that are hand sanitizing.
Yeah, hand sanitizer.
Communicate that beforehand.
Look fine in the hand sanitizer, but hopefully you can get it. It's wiped out in a lot of stores I've been in lately. I've just happened to walk by the shelves and they're cleaned off, but hopefully.
I think the educational component is important of how to get the piece out, Facebook, website. And, again, Brian's, I think, already ahead, working with the principals. They have drafted letters, getting out to the parents, because that's social media, and they have email communications, all of that.
You know, the health department, links to CDC, they can click on and move them over there for more information.
The information is out there. If you, you probably see this emails with 15 different links on it, right? So people, either they have to take time to look at it, or sometimes you've got to just put half a dozen items together and say, here, here are the top 10 things you should be doing for prevention, diagnosis, things like that.
And the common sense stuff, like the phone, you know, I mean, just people, some people probably don't even think about it, you know? Wipe it off once a day or.
Part of the border vet and the trips and the concern about whether or not the insurer will pay on the cancellation coverage.
Yeah.
They need to look at the force majeure language.
Yes.
To see whether or not the word diseases is used.
Yeah, good point.
And keep an eye on what people health organization does in terms of.
Because if that happens, maybe some of these things will have a different kind of force majeure then, right? So we'll keep you posted, updated, and we'll have a, we'll start working on a game plan for the town. Perhaps you can have an update from border fed, what they're doing.
Yeah.
Mostly the principal and.
Need to get that out there so people, you know, just be. Need to get that out there so people, you know, just be aware of it. Let's hope it doesn't get as bad as, you know, it could, so, good.
All right, so that's one. Very quickly, other things, I, I wanna keep us on, uh...
All right.
Yeah, we have a...
We got through the other part fast, so you can take your time now, Roche.
Take my time, light up a cigar and just go away. So, senior housing, um, I had a conversation with Joe Bajowski, Berlin Housing Authority. My message was that the council or the Board of Finance is not keen on giving a letter of intent at this point. We would like him to, uh, original, uh, conversation with the Berlin Housing Authority, but that he would give the Knights of Columbus property, in return, he would build, the Housing Authority would build 50, um, senior affordable housing units there, and we would like him to do that without the $2 million. So, he was not pleased to hear that, but, um, said, sure, you know, I'll, let, let me, give me a couple of weeks, we have some other options, I'll talk to a few people and we'll come up with a plan. It appears he is very interested in making this happen. We all are.
We all are, yeah, which is great.
And I just want him to know that the financial exposure is too high for the town and, uh, and we are not in a position to give him the letter of intent. So, I, I would have more updates the next time we meet.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we've all been trying to get this done, Joe included, Bajowski, and, um, it's very frustrating, it's very difficult to get the financing, the last administration was more difficult, there seems to be some things easing up, but, um, you know, the town commitment, the town commitment was the property and that's what most towns tend to do and even the consultants that the Housing Authority has, you know, has hired and talked to us about, that's what most towns do ver, uh, I don't think there was any towns, might have been one or two that kicked in, um, you know, significant money, like $2 million, um, for 40 years with no interest. Um, you know, that's, that's a significant, uh, um, event for the town to handle and there, you know, we, we gotta look for some other funding. I just don't think that's, uh, how it's been built in any towns and, or most towns in Connecticut, but, you know, the consultants have told us that. So, but we gotta get it done and, and it's difficult, you know, the funding is difficult, but we're, you know, we're, we're definitely, uh, pushing forward with it to the best we can, so it's certainly not, I don't want people to think it's a lack of commitment on the town because it's not, it's just not the way these projects are funded and I guess I found offensive, quite frankly, that I was think, you know, I was thinking of trying to get everybody to, to vote for it and the council and the Board of Finance, we've, we've all had discussions and, you know, the, the terms are just not, to me, not fair because the, the tax credits have investors that get interest paid on the money they loan and then they get the benefit of the tax credits later and the town's getting, you know, we're gonna, in essence, loan money for nothing. And, uh, you know, I don't, that's kind of offensive to me that the private investors are gonna make a 4% interest rate for a few years and then 5%, okay, a 5% interest rate and then also get the benefit of the tax credits and, you know, so why, why don't we get that, some of that, you know, to bring back to the, to the residents for using their taxpayer dollars, so. So, we're trying to find, you know, a, a fair and equitable way to get it moving and we've been trying, it's just been, the funding is terrible, we've, you know, we even spoke to, uh, Senator Murphy's representative, she came by for a visit and we, you know, posed that to her as well, she said she's hearing it from all the towns, it's the same situation, you know, the funding is very difficult, lack of funding, so trying to reach out, we reaching out to Speaker Arasimovitz too, uh...
Friday.
Friday when we're meeting with him and, uh, you know, expressed our concerns about that. So, we're, we're trying to do everything possible to bring this project forward, but it's, it's very, very difficult. I, I, it should, it should not be, but that's just the way it is.
Mayor, is that because the emphasis is more on affordable housing rather than senior housing?
Yes, it seems to be, so, right, you go, you go and you put in all these projects for the funding and you get points, so they only pick so many projects, there's almost so much money available and the word senior affordable, I guess senior apparently to the funding authorities is a bad word, a, and that's from what we hear. And I, that's, doesn't seem right to me, but that's just the way it is, that's what we're dealing with, they wanna just call it affordable and then, which means we wouldn't be able to limit it to seniors and we'd like to be able to do that, we've got a waiting list in Berlin, most towns do, and there's, you know, very, very much a need for senior affordable housing, but it seems like it really, uh, possibly limits the financing, uh, for it, so it's a little bit of a quandary we're in, so we're, you know, working on it and, I don't know, you know, I know you've, we've talked about the other projects you've been involved in, it's difficult everywhere, right?
It is, I think, the difficulty with this project is the amount that the town is being asked to contribute, it's just unprecedented.
Right.
And per square foot cost...
It's high, right?
...of the proposed project, understanding that we don't have 100% construction documents, the number is just way out of whack, the $235 a square foot is astronomical number of comparison to other projects that have been involved in our...
And, and you relayed that to us as well, so, yeah, I mean, we, we, we have to, you know, be reasonable, we want it, we, you know, we, we can't pay just unlimited funds for it, but we, we definitely have overturned every rock and every place we can find funding and I know Joe is working hard to do that, so, you know, I'm glad we're, you know, gonna move forward with it, just, just perhaps without that contribution, because we're already making a significant contribution with the property.
I, I think there are some other ways you can do it, George, I wouldn't, I'll wait for him to come and share with the group, but he's, has some other ideas, so it's not a, not that the project's not gonna go forward.
Right, right.
I'd think differently and be a little bit more creative.
Sure.
And I'm, I'm confident we'll have some kind of, you know, housing, senior housing.
I know it's a high priority and I appreciate you working on it and everybody, you know, talking about it and trying to figure out how to, how to move it forward, so.
All right.
Get there.
Just a quick update, just so that everybody knows, the Senior Center Community Center, headed by the PBC, they have started having their outreach and dialogue and conversations, reached out to the community center, um, they have a whole list, I don't know whether you have seen it, PBC is supposed to share that with the council and at some point I should ask them to provide a report. There's a plan on how they're gonna out, reach out to the community and get input.
Okay, before they hire, uh, don't they hire...
They have, uh, let off, um, ten, so to say, the...
Yeah.
So that they can get, go ahead and get started.
Okay. Yeah, if we could get that to the council, whatever, whatever they're putting out, just so we know, because we get, obviously, I'll get asked questions, so we would have, you know, what, I mean, we've all said it's with, we know it's with public building, but at least we get a little bit more detail to tell people that ask us questions.
Couple of other things that, sort of, house cleaning, the, the, on the 18th of March 6:30, the Police Commission, when they meet, they will be talking about the space needs. They're all in agreement with what we have discussed.
That's great.
But, the chair of the commission would like to formally, um, discuss it at the commission, uh, I believe to recognize that, uh, longer term, there are the needs, but this might be a fix for the short term.
What time's the meeting start?
6:30.
6:30.
On 18th, so, uh, if you can be there.
And we're gonna do it, uh, Board of Ed?
Oh, police, the PD.
In the PD?
Why don't, why don't we, uh, it's very crowded in that room. Can we move it to the Board of Ed meeting room?
I could ask.
We ask?
I could.
That room's, the, the room they usually meet in is pretty small.
Okay.
So, you know, if we have, you know, most of us...
I try to stay out of the, I try to stay out of the PD.
Yeah. But, I wonder if, if, if they would, uh, be so kind as to think about a little bit more room for, you know, perhaps a little bit larger audience?
Yeah, I could, I could...
Maybe, maybe that's why they're having us meet there.
Right. Why, in the PD?
That's a regularly scheduled meeting.
We're not taking the bait, we're not going in the PD, all right? We're not going in there, no, no.
Roche, the 18th that was?
It's a Wednesday, 6:30, yep.
I mean, if we have to be there, it has to be there, but I, it's, it's a small room, you know? Hence, they need an, they need an addition, now I get it.
You can't say it's standing room only.
That's, that's right. So, um, yeah, it might be better, unless we need, and, you know, if we need to, at some point, I think most of us have done a walkthrough in the PD, right, so, um, uh, not, not because we needed to, but, you know, because we wanted to, yeah. So, yeah, we didn't do the perp walk, no, we, we were okay, but...
Especially the new jail cells.
Right, right. Saw the new jail cells, uh, beautiful they are, like to spend several nights there, no, not at all. Nice and new, but not a place to spend any time. But, so, yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking maybe a bigger room might be better if they...
I'll ask.
If they can do it, so...
Absolutely.
Yeah, so that's good, we can get that renovation moving, that would be good. Finally, to give them some space they need.
Next item is the Berlin High School construction closeout. Remember, this time...
Or, or...
I've been, having individual conversations with, um, Don Lombardo, PBC, Board of Fed, Superintendent, they all, um, the answer advice would, to me, was to accept what the Board of Fed's proposal, to hire a third-party independent group with no connections to Berlin, preferably not to Connecticut, someone from outside, consult the firm, come in independently, review it, and, um, and then Board of Fed has said that even before they do the, go in that direction, they'll agree to go with whatever the consultant says. They say there's no need to do the jacketing, current system is adequate, uh, they'll go with that. And then also, um, they say they need some additional work, they would want, um, the work to be done. And then, uh, my message is, once that is determined, they need to close the project. That is the only one that would be addressed and they've agreed to it. The mayor has advised that we have a, at least a conference call with all the parties for 10, 15 minutes to make sure that everybody's on the same page, and I'm trying to coordinate that at some point.
Good, yeah, but, I mean, you know, we, I know we've gone back and forth, I mean, those two studies, the consultants' reports, we, we were forwarded and read, I don't know, like, they, you could probably read them either way, right? If you, if you read the, the reports and, uh, so, yeah, one last time, I guess, I mean, it's, I'd really hate to have to do that, but, you know what, if we get everybody on the same page and that's the final word and that's it, as long as they agree, they're gonna have to sign off on the project, no matter, you know, I guess, I don't really understand it myself, I mean, we own that, no matter what happens to that, of course, we're gonna fix it if it needs to be fixed, but there, there just is so much, perhaps misinformation or, or just, you know, different things floating around and it's been going on for a couple of years now at least.
To me, sort of, we, sorry.
Yeah, no, we need to move that forward because we're, we're gonna, you know, we wanna get the reimbursement started from the state, we know it takes perhaps years and the sooner we get going on it, the better and, again, I mean, that, we own that, if, if, God forbid, something's wrong with it, of course, we're gonna fix it. It's never been an issue, but the issue is, do we really need to fix it? Anyway, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's enough, I was gonna say, that's the key, sooner we close the project, sooner we can get into the pipeline to get our retainage back, just a half million dollars, providing everything goes well.
Yeah.
Even if it's in five years.
Right, it's okay, whatever it is.
It's okay.
Get it started.
But, we gotta, we're not even in the run now.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the PBC is, uh, you know, basically stated that, uh, you know, they think it's done, but, so, so we'll get there.
Yep.
Hey, Joy.
Next one is, uh, just an update on the Timberland Golf Course, we put an RFP out, um, it's on our website, it's public information, to see if there's an entity that would be interested in coming in and, um, investing in our kitchen and the clubhouse, a significant amount of money, to renovate it and then, and for a longer-term contract. So, we had a walkthrough which was scheduled a few days ago, there were four groups that came in.
Wow.
And the, uh, took a look at it, I don't know if who's going to submit a bit, a, a proposal, but they're due March 26th, so I'll let you know how things go after that, because the current contract runs out December 31st. And it'll be nice to get, uh, somebody else to pay for renovations, the kitchen and the clubhouse.
Overdue.
Way overdue, right? Good.
Right, um, Intendent Village will talk on the executive session, the items we need to talk about that. Just, again, uh, we started the budget meetings yesterday.
Yeah.
Thought it was a good meeting. Tomorrow, the Board of Fed presents their budget, I encourage you to attend if you haven't seen it or if you, it'll be very helpful, I plan to be there. Then next Monday and Wednesday, the Board of Finance, they have something called a workshop, where they actually go through the budget and ask questions and make adjustments if they, if necessary, I plan to be in that session as well.
Well, so, uh, next Monday, their first workshop, what was that?
7 o'clock.
In the Bo, in the, in, oh, in the Mac, okay, just there and so...
Same on Wednesday too.
Okay.
It's a regular finance meeting.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay.
Invited.
At 7 o'clock?
Yep.
7 o'clock next Monday, which is, what is, what is next Monday?
I think, uh...
What is it? Huh? What's next? Oh, the ninth, okay.
The dangerous next.
The ninth, yeah, okay, thanks.
The ninth.
Okay.
Okay, and then, uh, just FII, Friday, the mayor, Kevin and I will be meeting with the speaker to get an update on, ask about, um, any legislative updates on the funding, what's in the queue, and also to just talk about, uh, senior housing. We also wanna talk about the Senior Center Community Center and also anything else that you would like to discuss.
Yeah, that's good.
And if you all have anything that you wanna bring to the speaker, we'll be happy to do it.
Yeah, we try and get together, have, you know, with him, uh, once a year before legislative session and tell him what, give him a wish list, perhaps, or ask how, how the funding is going from the state and, uh, see how it goes, so.
Conclude my remarks.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, uh, special committee reports, uh, what do we have? We have the ordinance committee last week, all we had on the agenda for that was, uh, the golf course commission ordinance, hence that's coming forward for the public hearing to, to go ahead and, uh, amend that ordinance and, uh, we already had it, approved their, their budget request, so we just gotta formalize that with the, with the vote, with the ordinance hearing at our next meeting. And, uh, that's all we had of the ordinance committee, any other, you guys had, there are no other special committees, but you already reported on the Fields Committee, right? Okay, so Council Communications, what do we got, anything?
I just wanna say, Roche, thanks for the information and that all the budget information up to date is on the town...
Yeah.
...website on the finance page, right? So, people can go there and start looking at it themselves if they're interested, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. But, yeah, that's good, we got this. All right, what do we got? Any other questions, comments from the council?
Nothing.
Nothing, all right. Uh, all right, so we got acceptance of some minutes, uh, February 18th meeting, so we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from the special town meeting on February 18th at 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Second, thank you, any further questions? Every none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Number two, to accept the town council regular meeting minutes of same day, Tuesday, February 18th.
Okay, thank you, second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any other questions on that? Every none, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you. So, that brings us to, uh, our executive session, so we just need a motion to move into executive session.
Sure, I move to move into executive session for, one, pending litigations, like, general state statutes, 1-206B, strategy and negotiations with respect to pending claims, repending litigation with Kokomo, Kokomo Brothers Associated, and two, real estate, uh, discussion of a selection of a site or sale or purchase of real estate by the town, 861-889-903 and 913 Farmington Avenue.
Second on that?
Second.
And then we'll obviously have, uh, town manager and Mr. Denafio.
Chris Edge.
Chris Edge, yes, invited in. So, we'll just take a couple of minutes to clear the room.
You gotta vote.
All those in favor, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye, 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 okay, all, any, any, but any nays? Every none, okay, motion carries.